All right, welcome everybody. I'll call this meeting to order. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Deputy Reeve in council, administration would like to request two items. The items are under new business, 9.3.2 bylaw number 1896 revised CO bylaw. Item number two, 9.3.3 2005 correction 2025 budget adjustment.
All right, is there anything else here? I've seen anything, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? No, it's councillor Krybiak. All right, councillor Krybiak makes a motion that council approves adoption of agenda with the following additions, 9.32 and 9.33. All right, that's carried. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes of last regular council meeting on March 25th? Councillor Fedeav. Councillor Fedeav makes a motion that council approves adoption of minutes of the March 25th, 2025 regular council, regular meeting of council as presented. Call that to vote. All right, that's carried. On to 7.1.
Good morning. This is development permit application 2025-d-042 for Ryan's Engine and Valve Inc. The applicant is applying for a general industrial use for their heavy duty truck and egg equipment repair business. The property is located southwest of Highway 28 and Highway 892 intersection in the hamlet of Ardmore. Adjacent properties are HG residential parcels, two undeveloped HG parcels, greenhouse, cemetery, and an MD owned quarter section remnant. The applicants have been operating a major home business on their home parcel since 2020 and are looking to relocate and expand the business. They will operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There will be nine employees. They will work on four to 10 pieces of equipment per day. They have an oil disposal tank and dispose of other waste through a third party safety clean or the landfills. They plan to fence the parcel. This use is compliant within the Ardmore area structure plan, which shows this area for future light commercial industrial use. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on March 7th, 2025, and we did not receive any concerns. Our recommendation for development permit application 2025-d-042 is approve the request for general industrial use for a heavy duty truck and egg equipment repair facility business as a discretionary use as per Part 6 general regulations and Part 7, Section 76.2 of the land use by law with the following conditions. Alberta transportation approval is required, setback from public roads as per Section 42.1 of the land use by law 1667. The minimum setback shall be external public road 38 meters from the center line and primary highway 71.3 meters from the center line. Hamlet setbacks as per Section 76.4 of the land use by law number 1667. The minimum side setback shall be side yard 1.5 meters. Building electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or a covered slash enclosed trailer as per part, as per Section 2 of the consolidated public safety by law number 1812. As per Section 52 of the land use by law number 1667, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic safety. Shall comply with consolidated public safety by law number 1812 regarding noise control and nuisance. Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick one about, so this looks like it's a raw piece of land right now. There's no residential spot on there at all?
Through the charity council, that is correct. It is vacant, there's still the trees up, and it is undeveloped.
All right. Councillor Fedeav?
Yeah, thanks. Just for, so the public knows, so the primary access is going to be not on Highway 28, it's going to be off one of our range roads or township roads?
Currently, the access is through the south of the parcel off the township road, correct.
So now is that piece, is that gravelled or is that, is that oiled?
That is gravelled, I believe.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion? Oh, councillor Slupczak?
Yeah, I got a question because I noticed it's 14,500 square feet. So he understands about the fire suppression, we've been having a lot of issues with large buildings, fire suppression. And has that been brought to his attention and all that?
That is being addressed, but that will be looked at at the building stage, not the development permit stage.
Okay, but, okay, thank you. I'll make a motion then to approve this.
All right. All right, councillor Slupczak makes a motion that we approve the development permit application 2025-d-42. Any discussion? All right, call the vote. It's carried. On to 7.2.
This is development permit application 2025-d-048 for J. Reid Trucking Limited. The applicant is applying for a natural resources extraction facility for clay pit. The property is located northeast of Highway 41 and Township Road 620 in the northeast corner of the quarter section. Adjacent properties are two country residential lots, two industrial lots, and quarter section remnants. The applicant operates Rockside Gravel Limited and would like to add clay to their deliverables. They constructed a test pit in the northeast corner of the quarter section, which with the road equals approximately two acres in size. They will mine the clay on demand during the daylight hours during the summertime. There will be an average of three loads per day with a maximum up to 20 loads depending on the orders. The max size of the pit will be up to 12 acres with reclaiming occurring as the pit proceeds. The applicant finalized an activity plan that provides further details about the buffer zones, erosion controls, and safety during inactivity, inactivity times of the pit. A class 2 pit, which is under five hectares, 12 acres, including roads, pits, stockpiles, and associated facilities, does not require approval through Alberta Environment and Protected Areas, but it is required a reclamation certificate at the end of the life of the pit. The applicant supplied a reclamation plan prepared by Silver Sage Enterprises Limited. A referral was sent to Infrastructure Services and the applicant has a blanket heavy haul agreement for the business. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on March 12th. We had a landowner come in, he understood the application and did not register any concerns. Recommendation for development permit application 2025-d-048 is approve the request for a natural resources extraction use for a clay pit as per Part 6, Section 62, and Part 7, Section 69 of the land use by law with the following conditions. Shall comply with all provincial and federal regulations. The pit shall be operated as per the submitted reclamation plan. Shall comply with consolidated public safety by law number 1812 regarding noise control and nuisance as per Section 52 of the land use by law number 167, 1667. Outdoor lighting shall not, shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic safety. This permit may be revoked at any time if, in the opinion of the development authority, the use is or has become noncompliant, detrimental, or a nuisance to the character and amenities of the neighborhood. Any questions?
Yeah, I just, I've got a couple of questions. So, does he own the quarter section then?
Yes.
And he just, so he's going to end up cutting out 10 acres there? Essentially?
11, 10, yeah, because the road does count into that 12 acre total. If he does want to go above the 12 acre limit, then he would have to get provincial approval, so.
But, so is he subdividing this, or is that?
Oh, no.
Could it just be part of the quarter still?
It's still part of the quarter.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Not a, not a question, I just think like this one and the last one, it's great to see businesses growing and expanding in the MD, so I'll make a motion to approve this.
All right, councillor Kirk makes a motion that council approves the development permit application number 2025-d-048. Any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All right, carried. On to 8.1.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Administration is presenting subdivision application 2025-s-004 for council consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing to subdivide a 12, 12 acre parcel for the existing industrial use structures for agricultural quarter section southwest 36619, west of the fourth, as shown on the map. I would like to let council know that the applicant is here if you should have any questions for her at the end of my presentation. The subject site is located on Range Road 470, approximately 800 meters north of Highway The application does not meet the requirements of the municipal development plan and the land use by law number 1667. It is recommended that the proposed subdivision be refused. Alternatively, as per the land use by law, Section 1667, Section 69.4, that the applicant demonstrate to the satisfaction of the subdivision authority that existing farming operations will not be restricted. Can you zoom into that at all for me, Wendy? So that's what the parcel looks like, the L-shaped portion of it there. So the proposed subdivision may be conditionally approved if the following conditions are met: that the owner developer install internal road approaches, including culverts and crossings, to the satisfaction of the MD of Bonneville; that the applicant submit a review of the real property report or sketch plan as submitted by an Alberta land surveyor, and pursuant to the Municipal Government Act, Part 1, Section 7 of the subdivision regulation, the sewage disposal shall comply, and that the, all taxes to be paid in full. So the recommended action is that it refuse with alternate as action number two. Is there any questions?
Yeah, so is it, it's supposed to refuse because it's not 10 or under?
It is refused because the soil fertility rating on that is above the 45% requirement, and with that being above the 45%, they're only allowed the 10 as per the land use by law. However, council does retain the right to amend that.
Because it looks like most of that was already, has a house and all that stuff on there, but that little area there might be farmed, is that why, or?
This, through the, through the deputy Reeve in council. The center portion of it is where their living quarters are currently. The portion that we're looking at subdividing out has two industrial use shops on it that they are planning, that's why they want to take out that subdivision for that industrial use.
Okay, correction before, wasn't this brought to us a few council meetings back earlier?
Through the deputy Reeve to council, yes it was. It was for 10 acres. Since then, the applicants have reassessed their situation on what's going on there and would like to encompass that extra little bump that goes up to create that L, as it is fenced, and it is currently considered part of that yard site. They would just like to keep that entire piece together.
So, I believe we did approve the first one, right? Didn't we?
They got approval for the first one, yes. So if council were to approve this one, that one would be withdrawn.
Okay, so who, who, how did we come up with, coming up with a second one? Like what changed in between the first one to this one?
The applicants decided that they wanted to encompass that part that is fenced in the north.
Yeah.
And then that would, that was what created the larger parcel to be requested for subdivision.
Okay, so did applicants, did they increase it due to some information that was received by administration maybe, or?
No, the applicants received, they have a fence line there.
Okay.
So when they went back and they reviewed what, what the request was, they determined that that two acres is not farmable to the quarter section anyway, because there is a row of trees there, there is a fence line there, so that, therefore, that two acres would be wasteland.
They really should have did, stood the 12 to start, is what you're saying.
They, they could have applied for the 12 at the start, but they did not.
All right, councillor Krybiak?
Through the deputy Reeve, thank you. We've had several of these over the past little while. I see most of this is a yard site. I think the bylaw has to be changed so that the yard site is not part of the percentage, because you can't farm that farm site anyway, so I want a support to approve this, so unless councillor Slupczak wants to make the motion. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve this as per conditions. Thank you.
All right, councillor Fedeav?
Yeah, thanks. So would this not be considered like a realignment versus a whole new subdivision?
Through the deputy Reeve's council, this will not be a realignment as the first subdivision was not completed. The first subdivision was approved, no further action was taken on it. This is strictly an industrial use structure. The land is to encompass the industrial use, there is no residence on it.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
So did they have to pay for each application now? Is there two charges, or?
Yes, there's two charges.
Can we, is there a way to waive that first one then, or?
I don't have that power to do that, sir. However, I will state that there is an incredible amount of work that goes into a subdivision to compile all of the required information. There are notifications that have to go out with the first one as well as with the second one, to each of the adjacent landowners and to each of the agencies that are noted on title. The same amount of work goes into each application, whether it's their first or second application.
Yeah, it's two separate applications, so.
Thank you.
Simple enough. All right, here's a motion by councillor Krybiak that council approves subdivision application 2025-s-001. Any more discussion on that? All right, seeing none, call the vote. That's carried.
Thank you.
Nothing under 9.1 then, right? 9.2, 9.2-1 bylaw number 8, 1887.
Good morning. I'm here presenting bylaw number 1887 for first reading. Administration is seeking council's direction for roadway license by law number 1887, authorizing the MD to enter into an agreement, license the road allowance east of LSD 924635, west of the Fourth Meridian, in accordance with policy number 3A.018, as shown in appendix A. Bylaw 1887 is the amended reapplication of roadway licensing by law 1780, which expired in December of 2024. Following the approval of roadway licensing by law 1780, administration was made aware of historic and ongoing contention between the applicant and adjacent landowner with respect to a shared fence within the road allowance. During the three-year term of the roadway licensing agreement for the now expired, now expired by law 1780, both the applicant and the adjacent landowner were expected to remove their respective half of the fence and construct one on their individual property lines if required. The applicant has applied to license the road allowance to keep their half of the existing fence in the road allowance for use as an alleyway to move livestock from the southerly parcels from time to time, owned by the applicant, to the northerly portion of northeast 24635, west of the fourth. If the bylaw receives first reading, public notification of the proposed bylaw will occur, including to adjacent landowners, prior to the second reading. If defeated, the bylaw would not proceed any further. The applicant, Mr. Braun, is in attendance if council has any questions regarding his intent of the application at this time.
Councillor Fedeav?
So, so in regards to the map, so is the fence on the east side, or is it on the west side of the road, or is it right in the middle?
The existing fence in question is on the south half of the full length of the quarter section in the middle.
So there's not a gate, there's just a fence?
Just a fence.
So tell me more about the dispute, whatever you, whatever's documented.
Deputy Reeve, if I may, is it possible for the applicant to come up and share his details instead of administration?
Pardon me?
Is it possible the applicant can come up and?
Need a motion for that? Councillor Slupczak makes a motion. Councillor, oh. Councillor Slupczak makes a motion that council approves Ron, Ron Braun to address council regarding item 9.2.1 by law number 1887. Call the vote. All right, come on up, please.
Deputy Reeve, if administration can have a moment, just want to caution if anyone within council or the complaint itself calls for a closed session, administration is open to the idea.
Well, just see, hear what he's got to say. Good morning. You have a particular question, or?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I, I don't own the situation at all. And it looks like you have quite a bit of the, of the land around it, and I'm just, just wanted to find out.
We had a few issues of the adjoining neighbor, he, he doesn't have cattle, but he rents his land out to local farmers and they graze their cattle there. We had a few breaches of those cattle coming onto my place and having their way with some round bales and stuff like that, so I was, I approached the neighbor to build his own fence, because apparently our fence was already in the middle of the road allowance. So I asked him to build a fence on his property line, and I would do the same on mine, and then we'd have 66 feet of relative peace between us. So, and that's when the problem started. He wasn't too keen on that and stuff, so he, he installed a few gates along his fence line to access the road allowance for whatever reason, and now he insists on leaving them open. So if I do need to move cattle from my joint land from the south to the north piece, I can't. So I've asked that I leave my existing fence that I built in, in error when I bought the quarter, I'd like to leave it in place. It's more to the west boundary of my side of the road allowance. It's basically a little sliver. When I build my property line, fence line, I'll be able to use that piece as a, as an alleyway to move the cattle from the south to the north, and vice versa backwards when I come back in the fall.
Just for clarification, so you were saying that the person didn't like it, was it the renter, or was it the landowner?
The landowner, yes.
Landowner?
Yeah, because he had built, in accordance to provincial ruling, we each have to supply our own part of the fence on a quarter line. And his was already built when I bought the quarter, so I just can, without even getting it surveyed, I just continued on down the line and tied it into my fence. Turns out, both of us were in error. We, we were quite a ways into the on the road allowance, and so I, to me, it was, to me, it was a very simple solution to get each of us to have our own fence lines and go from there.
Thanks.
Yes, I'm done. Oh, councillor Kirk?
So, does, does one of you currently have a lease on that, or, I guess it expired now, but before it expired?
I have an application in to have that little sliver of fence left on the road allowance. Because basically, I don't want to graze, I don't want anything to do with the road allowance, other than keeping the peace between us, and.
Do you want to keep the peace and have an alleyway, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this road allowance, is it all brush or grass? Can you access it with a vehicle?
Not, not with, with either one of our property lines. It's growed in and rocks and, because.
So, to, if there's issues going on between two landowners, like, would it be beneficial with just the MD keeps this road allowance and, it could keep it as we do others?
The issue is, he wants me to remove my sliver of fence, because he had to move his fence, so he feels that it's only fair that I move my fence.
Okay, your fence is on the right boundary?
That's just east of the west boundary.
Okay, but it's, it's infringing in the road allowance?
It is on the road allowance.
Your, your fence line?
Yes. And the only reason I need to leave it there is so I can move cattle, because of his, why, I'm not sure why he put the gates in, but there's numerous gates, and if we do, if he does have renters' cattle there, if I go to move cattle and I can't keep them from contacting the other person's cattle, then there could be an issue between the bulls and, and fighting and stuff like that, and it makes, in my mind, it makes perfect sense to have that sliver, where I can just utilize it as an alleyway and go from there.
So, I guess this would be a question for administration, could we just keep this in the MD and keep it as, only as a public alleyway, which we have to give for road allowances, and ensure that no, no one is utilizing for their own personal reasons? Would that keep the, like, would that keep the peace site? I don't know.
Councillor Fedeav?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask administration some questions in camera, please. So I'll make a motion, go on camera. Thanks. Thanks for the info, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, councillor Fedeav makes a motion that this meeting goes into closed session at 9:28 for the following reason, foip, section 17. Seeing discussion, I'll call it to order, I'll call it to vote. That's carried. So now...
All right, welcome back. To do with 9.2.1, does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion for first reading, please.
All right, Councilor Freyev makes a motion that bylaw number 1887 being a bylaw of Municipal District of Bonneville number 87, where we licensing be given first reading. See no discussion, I'll call the vote. All right, that motion's been defeated. On to 9.3.1.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
This morning I have, excuse me, a request from the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association. They recently reached out to the MD with a proposal to implement annual membership fees and have requested feedback from all of the participating municipalities of the association. The MD has been a member of the ABMA since 2020 and has one representative position on the board with the current appointment being Deputy Reeve Skarson and Reeve Kalinsky is the alternate. This appointment is a four-year term expiring this October. The ABMA decided at their February 15, 2025 association meeting to present a proposal of introducing annual membership fees, believing that this will reflect a strong commitment from its members and act as a significant measure of involvement in the grant application process. Excuse me. These fees will expand the initiatives of the association, providing more resources for members. The ABMA network brings together municipalities where francophones contribute significantly to sustainable economic development. The association aims to encourage strategic projects and initiatives of an economic nature that are beneficial to all represented regions and advocate for economically vibrant, sustainable bilingual communities through a collaborative network of municipalities. The annual membership fees proposed by the association are included in the letter attached as Appendix A. The annual fee that would be applicable to the municipality is the municipal districts slash counties fee, which is $1,100. Attached for council's reference in Appendix A is that letter. At this time, because they're just requesting feedback from the municipalities, there is no costs or funding implications. The communication strategy is that administration will respond to the association with council's feedback on the proposed implementations of the annual fees. So the recommended action of administration is for council to direct administration to respond to the association's proposal for implementing annual membership fees as either in favor or opposition and providing reasons for your position.
All right, Councilor Kryvjak.
Thank you through the Deputy Reeve. How much funding have we been given in the past for this?
As far as I understand, we haven't provided any funding to the association directly, and I'm not familiar myself of any funding we've received from the association. Perhaps Deputy Reeve Skarson could speak a bit more to that, but I'm not familiar of any myself.
I'm just wondering also, like towns are $700 and MDs and counties $1,100, like there's a big discrepancy there. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I don't think we've given any funding to this organization since I've been around, and I think that we could write a letter with, ask for a little more clarity on what the benefits are for the MD, because I'm not sure what they are either, to be honest, as I said on that board. So I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but it's probably more concentrated around the urban areas, the towns and stuff. So as far as a MD paying more than anybody else, I don't, I wouldn't be in favor of that, so.
Councilor Freyev?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of overlapping in services. I mean, the stuff that I see in, that's bilingual has always been done. So I think we just continue even our own Vessel Beach is bilingual as well. So I mean, I think we just, we are continuing the bilingual community, and I think it's important for that, but I just don't agree with this discrepancy of the dollars and cents here. And also, I'm not in favor of supporting the $1,100 there, so that's, if I need to make a motion towards that, I can.
Well, I don't think they're asking for money right now, right? They're asking for feedback on the fees, I suppose, right? So.
So, you know, this was a bit of a contention with the town of St. Paul as well, of the structure of money, but yeah, I think it's not a support.
Councilor Subchak?
Yeah, I agree with Deputy Reeve Skarson. I'd like to see us get more information on what this money is going to contribute to and everything, and the fee structure as well. So I just want to make my voice on this.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, bring back for further information that we're in opposition right now.
Well, I think you're asking administration to respond, asking for information back.
Yeah.
The fee structure, why it was made, and some of the benefits to the MD.
So based on the feedback we're hearing, we can show a draft resolution, a motion that we prepared, and you can let us know if it's on par or if there's any adjustments you want made.
All right, Councilor Freyev?
Just wondering if they come back with it, how would that's going to change your minds to support this?
Yeah.
So we could just go with option two then. Additional information regarding funding and fees, fees and benefits.
Well, I suppose that the thing is, is that they're not, they're not asking for funding requests right now, right? So I don't know how you say no to a question that's not being asked, right? So.
Yeah, so if I may, we would maybe still like to just reword option one a little bit, because then we can, we'll draft a letter from, from the Reeve to, to respond to their proposal, and, and then they can respond to the municipality through that.
All right. Well, Councilor Subchak, there we go. Oh. All right, Councilor Subchak makes a motion that council directs administration to respond to the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association's proposal for implementing annual membership fees, requesting further information and clarity between membership fees proposed and benefits to provide, who provided to members. Any discussion on this? See none, I will call the vote. All right, that is carried. On to 9.3.2, oh no, yeah, point two.
So we have before you revising bylaws for the CAO bylaw. Just this past month in March, council did pass a new bylaw establishing the position of chief administrative officer of the municipality. Technical administrative error, sorry, was found in the bylaw during the processing of the document following third reading, and in response to this error, administration has prepared a bylaw making the necessary revisions to bylaw number 1893 Chief Administrative Officer bylaw. Section 63 of the Alberta Municipal Government Act allows municipality by bylaw to revise any of its bylaws under specific criteria, including to make changes without materially affecting the bylaw in principle or substance, and further to correct clerical, technical, grammatical, or typographical errors in the bylaw. So following third reading of bylaw number 1893, administration noticed that the incorrect bylaw number was referenced under section 10 for repeal. Under subsection 10.1 and 10.2, where it says bylaw number 1850, it should actually say bylaw number 1893. Administration is prepared and is presenting revising bylaw to address these corrections. So attached for council's review in Appendix A is the proposed revising bylaw, and Appendix B is the current CAO bylaw number 1893. Administration's recommended action is, we're hoping, since it's just a technical correction today, that council would be willing to give the bylaw all three readings.
All right, is there any discussion? Councilor Crick?
Yeah, I'll move first reading.
All right, Councilor Freyev? Nothing?
All right, thank you, Councilor Crick, for making a motion that bylaw number 1896 being a bylaw of Municipal District of Bonneville number 87, to revise bylaw number 1893 Chief Administrative Officer bylaw be given first reading. Call the vote. Oh. Motion for second reading. Councilor Freyev? All right, Councilor Freyev makes a motion that bylaw number 1896 be given second reading. No discussion, I'll call the vote. Councilor Kryvjak?
I'm making a motion to go to third reading.
All right, thanks, Councilor Kryvjak. Makes a motion to proceed to third and final reading for bylaw 1896. Call the vote. And Councilor Subchak?
I'll make a motion for third reading.
All right, Councilor Subchak makes a motion that bylaw number 1897 be given, 1896 be given third reading. Call the vote. All right. On to 9.3.3, budget adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Reeve. So this report is drafted due, for a 2025 budget adjustment at the regular meeting of council on May the, March, sorry, the 25th, 2025. Council directed administration to prepare a 2025 operating budget adjustment to increase council's public relations budget by $50,000. This budget adjustment will be used to facilitate the municipal election in 2025. The adjustment will increase the bottom line requirement to $2,215,000 with an overall tax increase of 3.63%. My apologies, I wrote this report really quickly, late yesterday afternoon, and I started writing before my brain kicked in, so that's why that wording changed there. This report will be posted on the MD's website with the council agenda for today, and the recommendation is that council approves an increase of $50,000 to council public relations line item in the 2025 operating budget.
All right, Councilor Crick?
So through the Deputy Reeve, just do a general manager walk there. You said that this will be used for the election for something? What was that? And I guess I'm not, I'm not familiar with, did we make a motion asking for 50,000 extra at our last council meeting?
Through the Deputy Reeve, my understanding was that council directed administration to increase the budget by $50,000 based on the conversation that you had, of which we'd need council approval in order to make that adjustment. My apologies, I missed the end of the meeting on March 25th, and so I didn't actually hear it, so I'll let Ben speak to that.
Deputy Reeve, it's for me. So at the present time in 2024, going into 2025, the direction was to come in extremely lean on all budgets. In this case, due with the most recent several items on behalf of council, we realized we put in, and we're looking for $10,000 for a possible factor regarding the bridge reward. That puts your budget right at its limit. And then going through what we're going to need for the rest of the year, looking for advice, I asked for a number generally, and we're looking for another 50,000. So when we make adjustments that we didn't see for the bridge reward, it does put you guys very close to your budget. It is our intent, now that we brought you in too lean, we went out for a bridge award, and if we need any additional money for the rest of the year, we're going to ask for 50,000.
Okay. So it's not, sorry, it's not, it's not for the sole purpose of election?
You're correct, it's not for the sole purpose of election, but don't forget, one of the factors was the bridge that we didn't foresee, and for the 24 or 25 budget, we came in extremely lean.
Okay. I did hear you mention something about election there, though, in your report. What was that? I mean.
So through the Deputy Reeve, that, that's my fault. I must have misunderstood. This landed on my desk really fast, and I wrote it really fast, so if I have that incorrect, my apologies.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Freyev?
Yeah, just wondering how bridge infrastructure falls into council public relations? That's just a question for me.
Through the Deputy Reeve, can you add more to that clarity? Counselor, please.
What you were saying is for, it was for the bridge, for the procurement of it. So how is that under council public relations budget?
So at the point of where we're looking for a item, like the bridge itself, the potential award for, to eviction or conviction, so the idea is where to find the money. We selected that area in itself, because it did have additional money. Again, we came in for 25, 24 budget extremely lean, and that's where we could find the award money, and we selected there.
But shouldn't that, sorry, Reeve, shouldn't that come out of the money we have for, for bridges instead of somewhere else? Like I, it's, there's a reason we have that fund, correct?
Through the Deputy Reeve, at the time that the original decision was made to address that reward, this, this is actually the line that would capture public relations awards and those kinds of things within council's purview. So that's where it was allocated, that was where it was approved initially.
Yeah, I think confusion there was, there was, we're kind of scrambling where, where we're going to get the money from, but, so, okay, fair enough.
All right, is there a motion somewhere?
I'll make the motion to go forward.
Yeah, I think that this one came through because we were having trouble finding money for some tickets, is that right? And so now you're adding to that budget for the moving forward kind of thing?
So Deputy Reeve and council, you're 100% correct. The intent is, again, you know, as administration goes through, we like to be every budget extremely lean, and in this case, this year, we leaned this budget out too much, and we'd like put some money back in as previous years.
Sure. All right, Councilor Subchak makes a motion that council present increase of 50,000 to the council public relations line item, 2025 operating budget. Any discussion on this? All right, I'll call the vote.
All right, we'll take a short recess in preparation for the delegation.
Good morning, Mr. Deputy Reeve and Council. Jeff Alliston with the Matrix Group, LLP is in attendance to present counsel with the audited consolidated financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2024. Administration will also be seeking council's approval in accordance with the Alberta Municipal Government Act. And that, and after that, I'm going to put the floor over to Jeff.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here today. Grab my stuff out. All right. Okay. All right. Well, thanks. Thanks for having me here. I'm here to just discuss the 2024 financial statement audit that our firm prepared for the, for the county. Okay. So usually to begin these presentations, I do a bit of an overview of an audit. So why we have an audit and the importance of it. And really it's to enhance the degree of confidence of the intended users of these financial statements. So the main users being yourselves as counselors, municipal affairs, rate payers, the province, so organizations or individuals with a vested interest in the financial performance of the MD. So this is achieved by us as auditors expressing an opinion. So we give assurance that numbers are free from material misstatements. So what that means is as auditors, we seek reasonable assurance. So it's a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute. So we're not auditing every transaction that happened during the year. Also, as auditors, we exercise professional judgment, maintain professional skepticism. So a questioning mind, we stay alert to conditions which may indicate possible misstatement. So areas such as cutoff, we want to make sure that transactions have been recorded in the correct fiscal period, revenue recognition, making sure revenue is being recognized when either performance obligations or services have been rendered, your collectability of your accounts receivable. So do you have any deemed, you know, bad debts or allowance that should be applied to anything in there? And then also a critical assessment of the audit evidence. So has any evidence been altered? Did we obtain evidence directly from a third party? If we got information from, from management, is that seen to be as, as good information for, for the financial statements when it comes to estimates? So yeah, so those are kind of areas in relation to, to the auditor there. When it comes to the independent auditors report on the financial statements, so page three and four of the financial statements at the top, we give our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The financial position results of operations in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So those are the standards that the municipality reports under. The next part here is the basis for opinion where we outline that we conducted our audit in accordance with Canadian generally accepted audit standards. The next part is responsibility of management. Those charge for governance for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And then the second page, the auditors report outlines our auditor's responsibility, which in turn outlines our objective, which again is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement. So when you take a look at the MD's financial statements, this is a snapshot of where the MD was at as at December 31st, 2024. So your statement of financial position, you'll see your cash position was at about 8.5 million, which was down about 19 million from the prior year's 27. So you had generated positive cash flow from your operations, about 25 million. You spent about 880 on debt repayment, 16 million on tangible capital asset additions, and then moved about 28 million into investments. So that was kind of the change of your cash. You did generate positive cash, but moved more into really into your investments. When it comes to taxes and grants in place of taxes, so here you can see your current taxes are down about 566,000 year over year. So definitely more collectibility there is about 800,000 of that is one year or less owing. When it comes to your arrears taxes, so taxes over a year are up to 1.1 million from 870. So a total of just under 2 million, which again is down from prior year. And then you have an allowance here for doubtful accounts, roughly 338,000 of the balance versus prior year's 306. So although, you know, a bit more in the arrears, definitely the, the overall amount is down to 1.6 from 1.9 there. Other receivables here, trade another just over a million. Receivables for GST was just under 400,000. You'll see that's down from prior year. Last year just had about three months worth of GST. This year was just two. So you see a change there. And then prior year, you had a receivable for MSI Capital where there's none this year. So that's kind of the change. You also see a decrease in the allowance as you collected an amount in relation to the Woodhaven West Development Property there. So that's down to 176,000 as well. Back to the statement of financial position, you'll see you have a debt recoverable for local improvements here. So a principal was collected on that in the year from those residents. Loan receivable of 2 million, which is in relation to the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority loan that the MD has out to the Bonneville Regional Fire. So this kind of represents the town's portion of that loan as the MD owns 71% of the, of the fire authority, which does get consolidated into your financial statements. Land held for resale of 344,000. And then in your investments. So your investments, so there's two categories here in relation to Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. You have investments measured at fair value and then investments measured amortized cost. Your fair value investments are made up of, it's called a principal protected note, and those items are hedged against the market. So if the market goes up, there'll be a realized gain on those when they're sold later. And then there's a hedge to prevent the, the loss component of that as well. So those are where those ones are. And then the amortized cost ones of 31 million represent fixed income securities. So they had rates about 1.67 to 3.75, maturing between 2025 and 2033. And then as well as your percentage ownership of the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority, who have term deposits as well from 4.5 to 4.93%. So that makes up the total 134 million dollars that you, that you have here in investments. When you go back to the statement of financial position, you'll see your total financial assets are up about 8 million, up to 148 from 140. When you look at your liabilities here, accounts payable and accrued liabilities of 5.2 million. So prior year, you had your, you had about $10 million of taxation reassessment that was repaid. So that's why that accruals are down year over year. Usually you're around 5, 6 million when it comes to accounts payable, deposit liabilities, and then deferred revenue of 4.9 million. So this represents grant funding that the MD has collected, but have not yet spent on a required project. So your Canada Community Building Fund is at 2.8 million. Bonneville Regional Fire Authority makes up their percentage of deferred revenue that you own from them. That's really in relation to Alberta Health Services money on their, on their financial statements, and then as well as your Alberta Water Course remediation grant, still 731,000 to spend there. After looking at deferred revenue, employee benefit obligations at 1.1 million, and then your asset retirement obligations, which are at 4.4. So during the year, there's an adjustment for accretion expense. So what that is, is every year, the asset retirement obligation will increase as it works towards its, its unconsolidated cash flow amount of 4.9 million. So there's an amount that will go into operations to pick up that impact. So then once those assets are fully matured, you'll have an asset retirement obligation to offset the amount needed to decommission those assets in the future. When it comes to your long-term debt of 8.6 million, so there was no new debt in the year, interest paid on this debt is about 292,000 and 880,000 in principal repaid. When you look at your debt servicing limits here, so you're still of an amount unused here of 147 million, and as well as the debt servicing limit of about 25 million. So well within your debt limits when it comes to that. So your total debt limits are calculated as 1.5 times your total operating revenues. So as your operating revenues increase, so too does your, your debt limit there. And then your debt servicing is at 0.25 times your operating revenue. So again, that increase is proportionate to your operating revenue as well. So in, in turn, your total liabilities here of 28.3 million. So again, down about, down 10 million from prior year, really in relation to your accounts payable and accrued liabilities. Leaves you with the net financial asset position of 122 million. So if you were to take your investments, cash, collect your receivables, pay off your liabilities, the MD would be left with 122 million dollars there. When it comes to your non-financial assets of 268 million, so here is just kind of a breakdown of your capital assets. You'll see additions in the year of just under 17 million. You had some building additions in relation to the Bonneville Regional Fire consolidation, as well as your environmental services building, machinery and equipment. You saw a couple of graders, couple of packers being purchased there, and then as well as vehicles with some freight liners and trucks being purchased. When it comes to construction in progress in relation to Bonneville Regional Fire, Fire Hall rentals there, so that's kind of a portion of that. And then your amortization expense of, of 20 million. So that represents the usage of your assets. So as you purchase assets, they last 20 years, 40 years, 10 years. A percentage of those, that when the costs get capitalized, a percentage of that asset gets expensed into your operations. So this year, you added about 17 million of additions, 20 million came out based on the assets. So you see a slight decrease in your net book value from 275 to 268. Your other non-financial assets, inventory for consumption, so just under 40 million there. So 38 and a half of that represents your gravel inventory, which is down from prior year. So gravel was, was used in the year there. And then prepaid expenses of 929,000 for total non-financial assets of just under 310 million. So when it comes to your accumulated surplus, which is your non-financial assets plus your net financial assets, you see here that your restricted surplus increased about 13.3 million, up to 100 million from 87. Your equity and tangible capital assets were down 6.4 million to 255 from 262. So what that means is that your surplus restricted, which kind of represents your cash component there is up 13 million. Your non-cash component was down 6.4, which leaves you with a net change in your accumulated surplus of 6.9 million, which is your annual surplus for the year. So really that surplus is tied into your reserve transfers and more of a cash component versus capital component there, or a, or a non, non-cash annual surplus. Yep. Yeah, go ahead. Whenever you guys have questions, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. So in vehicles and machinery, where do our fire trucks fall into?
They'd be in the vehicle side.
They'll be in the vehicle side?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So when it comes to your surplus breakdown here, if you look at your unrestricted surplus plus your restricted surplus, and then you have your accumulated remeasurement gains, losses, this 619,000 actually represents the principal protected note. So currently they're in a loss position. So that's where that calculation comes in, is there is a derivative involved in those investments. So that's kind of where it's tracked on the financial statement presentation. So that would leave you with a surplus before equity and TCA, your tangible capital assets of 176 million. So of that, 122 million represents your net financial assets or your cash component. So if you were to pay off your liabilities, how much cash would you be left with? Inventory, which is just under 40 million, which is a non-cash item, but you have that. Expenses that you've prepaid for the future, and then as well as long-term debt, asset retirement obligations, and your debt recoverable, which are, which were taken on in order to, to pay for or have tangible capital assets. So those ones factor into the equity and TCA, and then as well as into the surplus here. So that's kind of how you would break down those amounts if you were looking at what is our unrestricted surplus and restricted surplus made out of. So it's not all cash. There's definitely a large portion of that's inventory, and then as well as prepaid expenses. So when you look at your statement of operations here, you'll see your operating revenue is up to just over 104 million. Net municipal taxes, just saw an assessment value increase there, so up to 86 and a half from, from 86 million the prior year. Investment income is up to 7.7 million. So you're seeing good, good rates on that. Investment balance is increasing there, so a lot of additional income being earned from those, just under 8 million. User fees was down to 5.6 from 6.5, really in relation to the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority consolidation there. So nothing in relation to what the, the MD is providing in the, for those services. And then, yeah, and then other revenue was down as well, down to 1.5 from 2 million as there was a little less road maintenance revenue year over year there. Can't really see this, but this pie chart just kind of represents where your revenues are coming from. So about 83% is taxes. Investment income is up to 7% from five in the prior year. So when it comes to your expenses by function or department, you'll see your council and administration of 35 million versus 45. Last year again was that $10 million tax repayments. That's why you're seeing the decrease year over year there. Other areas of note, FCSS and community services. You had additional grants to other organizations that were spent there, up to 2.2 million from 1.8. And then as well in the water sewer and waste management, the accretion expense on the adoption of last year was higher than it is this year. So that's why you see a decrease there to 4.8 from 5.6. So overall, your actual expenses were just under...
A lot of that there?
Oh, yep. You bet.
The FCSS and community services?
Yeah.
That, you're saying we spent two, over $2 million last year?
Yeah. So you had more donations that were in the, to other organizations in the year that are grouped into that category. So I think...
Okay, that's in community services part then probably.
Like you had one in relation to Lakeland Regional Winter Games. I think that one was in there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Like those type of various ones that would have been included in there. So more of the community grants, that one now, not really in relation to FCSS, more all in the community service category.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you have another question? No?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so that left you just under 97 million versus 105. So about $8 million decrease there, or 7.66%. When you look at the budget, obviously you see about a $17 million variance there, really all in relation to the amortization, which is 20 million on your actual side, and then the budget amount being zero. So that's kind of where you're seeing the, the variance there from the budget to actual. This next slide here will show you where your budget would line up with your actuals without amortization. So you can see everything is either at or below what you had budgeted for, protective services are above, just really in relation to the Bonneville Regional Fire consolidation without the budget amounts in there. When it comes to the community services, again, more grants were given than were initially budgeted for in that area. And then road streaks, walks, and lighting, you had more material or inventory, like gravel costs that was expensed and was initially budgeted for in that line item. So that's why that's a bit above the budget there as well, once you take out the amortization. So when you look at the expenses by object, really some changes year over year here. Again, we talked about transfers to local boards and organizations, material goods supplies, up to 13 million from 11. Really the, the gravel inventory change year over year, the expense of that. Other, the change there representing the taxation amount, and then the accretion expense down to 200,000 from 2 million in the prior year. So in turn, if you take your operating revenue left, your operating expenses, you end up with a $7.5 million operating surplus for the year. Government transfers for capital was at 1.8. So those represent grants, MSI Capital that was used for capital projects, some contributed assets in the year, land and bridges, and then as well as the gain-loss on disposals. So disposal of old equipment as you bought new equipment to, to replace that, leaving you with an annual surplus of 6.9 million. So if you were to take that 6.9 million now and compare that to what you were budgeting, which would be at operating surplus of zero, you'll see here the changes in the year to add back amortization. Net transfers to reserves of 13.3 million. Acquisition of tangible capital assets, you kind of work down here to a surplus of about 50,000 in the year versus 7.8 in the prior year. So in summary, based on Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, surplus just under 7 million. Net financial asset position up to 122 from 104, so still in a, still in a healthy financial position there. When it comes to our findings report, we do not have any significant control deficiencies or unusual accounting policies or estimates. We have some unrecorded misstatements in there to go over, and no significant difficulties to be brought to the attention of the council. Just want to thank Susan, Tracy, and the team for all their support in getting us the information we needed. I guess if anybody has any questions on this part before I get into the other report, I can definitely address those as well.
All right. Is there anybody with a question or a motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just like to go in camera for a bit with counsel and the CEO. Thank you.
We'll wait for the motion to come up.
Yeah, I just wanted, if you're wanting to go in camera right away, or if you're wanting to go after his, after both of his presentations? Are you wanting to go in camera right away or after both presentations?
Sounds like right away. All right, Counsel Kryvjak makes a motion. This meeting goes into closed session at 10:29. This meeting goes into closed session at ten twenty-nine. I guess Kerry, we're into closed session.
All right, welcome back. We'll carry on with the second half of our delegation.
Did you get that audit findings report? This guy. Awesome. Okay, perfect. Okay. I got it now? Okay, perfect. All right. Okay, thanks. So this is our audit, audit findings reports, the kind of the qualitative part of our, the work we do here. So just to begin with a quick executive summary, really the purpose of this report is to promote two-way communication between ourselves as auditors and yourselves as counselors. So we'll finalize our audit as of today. We'll complete our subsequent event procedures, complete our communication, which is what we're doing right now, and obtain evidence of council approval. Once we have those items, we'll be able to issue signed audit financial statements. When it comes to changes from our audit plan, there were no significant changes from our audit plan other than our updating to materiality, which we initially set based on prior year's numbers and then adjust for current year's actuals. So we use 4% of operating expenses, or roughly 3.6 million here for the, for the M.D. So what we're saying here is that if your operating expenses, say, were to increase or decrease by that amount, we feel that a user of the financial statements, so yourselves as counselors, municipal affairs may have a different view or outlook on the financial performance or results of the M.D. We did not encounter any significant difficulties. That should be brought to the attention of council. When it comes to our engagement team, myself and Craig, the main leads here, responsible for the work that our firm did for the M.D. When it comes to our audit results, I'll just go over a couple of these. The main one here is really management override of control. So management's in a unique position to potentially perpetrate or manipulate the financial statements, so whether due to fraud or error, see, to conform to budget or to increase annual surplus. So we use data analytic tools that identify journal entries that are posted within the system that may be indicative of that happening. So we then test those entries. So say, an entry was posted, say, Saturday night. Our programs will pick that up. We would then look at those as to why, you know, entries are being posted outside of regular work hours. So those are the type of things that we're looking for. It's not just large amounts, but it's odd or unique things that potentially could be causing that. So we had no findings in that area to report. Revenue recognition is another one. So we want to make sure that, you know, grant funding is being recognized when any obligations are being met there. So get an understanding of your agreements, what projects you have going on there. So we had no findings in that area as well. Comes to a few other ones here. We had no significant findings in, in these other categories. Receivables is definitely one of concern. We always want to make sure that your receivables are deemed to be collectible subsequent to your end and as well as tangible capital assets, making sure that items meet the definition of those items or meet the definition of a tangible capital asset. So they shouldn't be expense, but should be capital in nature and as well as inventory, making sure that your inventory is in line with, with your, your policies and then the measurements that are done at year end. So we had no significant findings in, in those areas. When it comes to misstatements here, so we had some adjustments in the year for management as well as from ourselves. So that was the net effect change of those here. When it comes to unrecorded misstatements here, we have an understatement of the surplus of about 74,000. That's made up of a few, few adjustments during, that are not posted within the financial statements, main one being an adjustment to gravel inventory, so for 658,000 as well as a removal of a grant that was reported in, that should have been reported in 2023. That was reported in 2024 here. So again, kind of a timing issue there. And then as well as the Bible regional fire, which had a adjustment for a restatement in the year that was, that was represented within the M.D.'s financial statement. So again, a net change of 74,000. So we talk about materiality levels being three, over 3 million. We don't feel that these entries would change anyone's view or outlook on the financial performance of the M.D. When it comes to our control environment, so we didn't have any significant officies in internal controls. Your accounting policies, estimates are in line with public sector accounting standards. We'll issue a management letter to management with some non-significant items that we would have noted while performing our work. When it comes to appendices, so just appendix one here, just a quick communication on our independence. So we are independent of the M.D. So we do not hold a financial interest position, have a personal or business relationship or economic dependence on the municipal district. Appendix two is just our manager representation letter. So we'll get that signed in regards to our audit. That information was, was forthcoming to us there. And then our last one here is new and revised accounting standards. So on December 31st, 2027, there'll be another public sector accounting standard adoption in relation to your financial statement presentation. You'll see a change in your statement of financial position where your non-financial assets, which are currently presented at the bottom of your financial statement, will actually move up on there. So you'll go financial assets plus non-financial assets will equal total assets now. Then you'll have financial liabilities plus non-financial liabilities and then net assets. So those items will then equal total assets. So you'll have more of a traditional balance sheet approach there. So that'll be a change that'll come out in a few years. That's kind of it for audit findings report. I guess if anybody has any questions on that, I can, I can take those.
I think you did a great job explaining it, so. All right. Anyone want to make a motion? All right, anyone want to make a motion?
So the administrator, administration's recommended action is that council approves the twenty twenty-four audited consolidated financial statement for the municipal district of Bonneville as presented, and also that council approves the transfer of the twenty twenty-four operating surplus in the amount of six million eight hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to the cash flow reserve as per municipal policy.
I think you took the words right out of Mike Smoof.
Yeah, I'll make the motion through the deputy, yeah, thank you.
All right. You always put it up and take it away. All right, thanks, Councilor Kryvjak, makes a motion that council approves the twenty twenty-four audited consolidated financial statement for the municipal district of Bonneville as presented. No discussion on the matter? Oh, go ahead, Councilor Crick.
The recommended action was to put the money, the surplus into the reserves. Is that part of the motion, or is?
As presented, yeah, it was presented.
Okay, thank you.
As per policy, yep. All right, call the vote. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry? They were together, weren't they? Oh, okay.
You didn't put them together?
No, she did not put them together.
So you need the other one to sit, to move the money, you're saying?
That's correct.
All right, Councilor Slipchak makes that motion. I thought it was all in one. All right, Councilor Slipchak makes a motion that council approves the transfer of twenty twenty-four operating surplus in the amount of six million eight hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to the cash flow reserve as per municipal policy. Any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All right, that's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, on to five point two. Lakeland Extreme Bronx and Bulls.
Good afternoon, council. How are you today? Bring a little sunshine to you today? So, I just want to, first of all, thank you guys for taking the time to hear me out today. This is a new adventure for not only myself, but a good friend of mine, Sean Metuus, and Katrina Reed, who's here with me. We're trying to bring something different to the Lakeland, and the Cold Lake Energy Center is willing to host this amazing event that we're trying to bring. Now, I guess first of all, we just want to put it out there that this is a little different than what you're seeing as far as your, your regular bullaramas. This event is kind of like that, but different in the sense in, we're going to have bulls on the Friday night, and we're going to have bronc riding on the Saturday night. This will be indoors at the energy center. The event is focused with our bull riding being sanctioned by the Canadian Bull Riders Association. So that's going to give us the ability to bring in some of the top cowboys across Canada in bull riding. Same cowboys that compete at the CFR, the NFR, Calgary Stampede. Same thing goes with our bronc riding, we're approved through the CPRA, which is the Canadian Professional Rodeo Association. With that, we're able to bring in the same thing, those types of cowboys that are competing at those levels. Our stock is provided by C5 Rodeo out of Lac Le Biche. They are stock providers for the CFR, the NFR, and the Calgary Stampede. Now, we're going as far as to bring in our Calgary Stampede announcer, who does the rodeo portion for the Calgary Stampede. He will be here to be our announcer for the two days. Now, with this being a first-time event, of course, it takes a little bit to get this off the ground. So the city of Cold Lake has partnered with us to get this off the ground to the extent of helping us with a, a lot of the, the costs that come with bringing the dirt, and basically changing over the energy center to a rodeo facility. In amongst the two events, because the bull riding is the one day, the bronc riding is the second day, we will have local bear racing provided, as well as another form of some entertainment for the folks. What we're trying to do with this event is incorporate a few things, incorporate as many nonprofits as we can to help take care of their burden of looking for, for funds as well, from councils or from sponsorships. So we're bringing in local groups like the Cold Lake Ice to do our fifty-fifty, we're bringing in the Cold Lake Fighter Jets to come in and help us with our security. We're in talks with Kid Sport to come in and help us out with maybe our gate, the Cold Lake High School, they have their, sorry, I just lost my train of thought, their program, their, their student sport program to come in and help us with our gate as well. So we're trying to bring in as many community groups as we can to help, help us make the event successful, but at the same time, make some monetary funds as well as donation. Now, what's my ask to the MD? My MD, my, my ask to you guys is this. I, I would love to see some financial support if we can. I don't know what that is in the budget for you guys to do something like that, but that's why I'm here today. The city of Cold Lake has come in at about ten thousand dollars, not about, they did come in at a ten thousand dollar sponsorship. We would offer you guys the, the, the same level, so that bigger package, which is, we call it our champion rider. I think it's in there for fifteen, but what we'd be looking for is ten on that. The other thing that we would, that, that we're trying to do here is create a family event. So our ticket prices are going to be very, very inexpensive. We're looking at a twenty-five, I believe twenty-five dollars, right? Yes, twenty-five online, thirty at the door. The event, as far as the, the, the bull riders, we're going to have thirty bull riders competing on the Friday night. They'll do their full rides, and then it'll get down to a, I believe, a ten-rider showdown for the prize money. And then same thing with the bronc riding on the Saturday night. Again, trying to bring something different, I guess, into the community. I have talked to Kelly as well over at the C2, to maybe see if this is an event that we can bounce between the two communities, Cold Lake and Bonneville. As of right now, it looks like it's just going to stay Cold Lake, but if the C2 and with the ability to get animals in and out is there, we would, we would love, love to bring it to Bonneville as well. Anyway, with that said, the city of Cold Lake has also partnered by bringing in a, a big artist, Neil Towns, on the Saturday night to accompany this big event. So, yeah. I don't really know what else to throw at you guys, other than I hope you have questions.
All right, any questions for Councilor Fadiev?
Hi, thanks. So regards to your business plan, like when you're looking at a five-year plan with this, are you looking at a, and, and, you know, how does your costs come in and say, year two, year three, with maybe some of the sponsorships?
Yep. So basically what we're looking at right now, Councilor Fadiev, is we're trying to do this as a long-term event. The city originally had showed some some support in the sense that maybe they wanted to take it on, but with that comes some risk. So I think it was easier for them to get behind helping us to, to get this event off the ground. As, as far as, I, I can't throw any numbers at you just yet, because we haven't even hosted an event yet. But no different than what we've done with our Rib Fest in the years past. We'll share that information with you guys as always. I, there's, there's never a secret to, or a hidden agenda behind anything of the sort. And I'm not saying that you're saying that, Councilor Fadiev, it's just we're trying to do something different in the sense that, if you look at the CFR and the way that's, that, that's built in Edmonton or Red Deer, I, I don't think we'll ever get to that capacity, but to incorporate what they do with the farm fair and the stuff that, that goes with, with, with that, we, we, we're going to have that ability. So we're going to start small this year. We are having a vendor fair just outside of the, the energy center, within the hallways. So people can take a booth and, and set up a, a, a market, per se. To answer your, your question, though, as far as sustainability with the event, based on sponsorship and based on the city, and how long they want to help us along.
Yeah, thanks, Fred. I know, like, like the first two years are always the hardest.
They are, and I can give you a rough idea, like, right now, to put this event on for the first time, we're looking at roughly just over a hundred K. And for us right now, and just to be very straightforward, I, I think we're at, what, about twenty-five collected in sponsorship? Twenty-five, thirty? We're, we're there. We got a lot out there, and there's a lot of follow-up still to do, and I know we're, we're, I think we're a month away as of today. Again, we're in a market where a, a lot of companies really want to make sure their, their, their ROI is, is there, so their return on investment as well. There's a lot of.
Okay, Councilor Slipchak, you have a question?
Yeah. Was going to ask, so this event, we can't really determine how it's going to turn out until we get support of the public and get what happens. But I believe it could be an event like Gear Grabbers. It started off slow, look where it is today. And events like this, our community is wanting those, like, different events to attend locally. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you, Councilor Slipchak.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is this a, like a circuits event, or is this, and then how does it coincide with, don't they have a bullorama in Cold Lake already?
Okay, thank you, Councilor Skarson, or Deputy Reeve Skarson. Good question. So basically what, what's happening is, and I'm not, I don't want to speak on behalf of the bullaramas, because I've never done one. What I, what I can tell you is this, with our approvals through the Canadian Bull Riders Association, and through the Canadian Pro Rodeo Association, and with our stock provider, and putting all three of those together, the cowboys and the animals are all able to gain points towards their totals, which qualify them for the CFR and the NFR. What I do know is with the bullaramas that are happening within, at, at the Cold Lake Egg Society, those are more of your rough stock, and as well as their, their, their cowboys, they're, they're, they're not gaining any points. So I guess this is what separates us from them. Now, with the bull riding in St. Paul, they are through the C, the, the Canadian Bull Riders Association, so they do have the ability to gain points there. We are trying to build, I, I guess we're lucky enough to have Sean Metuus as, and having his contacts within the rodeo world, which has given us the ability to, to get on board with this. We have a, because we're a first-time event with the CPRA, we got to provide an upfront deposit of, I think, twenty, twenty-five thousand, and that's basically just to ensure that there's a purse for the cowboys to win. So I, I guess for us, and to kind of give you a little sum up, it, it, we, we are as sanctioned as high as we can go.
And then, how long does the, how long does that tie up the energy center from first third in to first third out?
Okay, so the dirt will be, I believe we're getting dirt put in on the Wednesday or Thursday, and then dirt will be removed Sunday, Monday. Yeah, they're looking at a week turnaround on this, so we're removing all of the glass from the, from the boards, and we're putting up paneling. The other thing is, which is going to be really cool, we have this, what they call a shark tank coming in. And this shark tank is, I mean, if you think about a shark tank in the water, you get to sit in the cage, and the sharks get to come up. No different than this. This is going to be a tank that's kind of put into the, into the grounds, where people will be able to sit and take in the bull riding and the bronc riding from a different perspective, within the arena.
All right, Councilor Fadiev?
Yeah, thanks. Now, regards to the tourism sector, are we getting any kind of tourism money from?
We have reached out, I know Katrina has reached out to Travel Alberta. I, I haven't seen anything just yet. Again, we put this together back in January, and we're just, we're getting going. I know with the city of Cold Lake, they're excited for the opportunity in the sense that they, they, they put a concert on at the same time. We're trying to build this into a come to Cold Lake for Friday, Saturday, Sunday kind of idea. And it's, it, it'll get there. I have the belief that because it's, it's, it's egg, it's exciting, it's, it's bulls, horses, what's there not to love? It's not hockey.
I think it's important for us to stand behind, you know, especially for commitment for not just one year, but possibly two years, because we see events that, you know, try to get it going, and then they just fail because it's the hardest two years, right? So Feast on the Beach is not going to be happening this year. So again, it's just a great event that you see people come out, but it's, it's, it's going to be missed, right? So we don't want this event to go away, personally.
And if I can just add, Darcy, I know you got other things to get to right after this, I just wanted to add that that the passion that Sean, and Sean wishes he could be here, unfortunately, he's teaching today. The passion he has for the rodeo side of it is really what, what's going to bring this together. And how we got partnered up is, of course, with our ability to market, his ability to bring in the best, that was the only way that this was going to work. And I just want to touch on the fact that the Cold Lake Egg Society is also coming in and helping us with this event. And again, any of our user groups that are coming in, as long as there's money to be made, it will be dolled back out. And I have no issues with bringing you guys back. If you guys were to come on board next year, present you with the financials from this year. And every year moving forward, there's, there's really nothing to hide. We're, we're, we are a for-profit, but at the same time, we're not in it to, to, to get rich. We're here to put an event on and build off of it, and hopefully be able to support not only three, four community groups, but down the road, hopefully get about ten community groups involved.
All right, Councilor Kryvjak?
Yeah, through the deputy, thank you for your presentation. What kind of budget do you have for prizes for the top ten?
For the top ten? So the twenty-five thousand is paid out through the top ten. I guess if, if that makes sense to you, through the CPRA and the bronc riding. Unfortunately, the one number I don't have is on the bull riding and what the payouts are there. But I'll put it this way to you, and this is the way Sean put it to me, if your, if your prize payouts aren't big enough, you're not going to attract the bigger cowboys. The idea here is to put on entertainment. So having bulls come out that don't buck, or having riders that can't ride a bull, that's not the idea here. The idea here is to get everybody in and out of the building within a two, two-and-a-half hour period of entertainment. So and so forth.
I was just wondering if it was worth my while to enter or not.
All right, is there any other questions there?
It's ten thousand, sorry. Katrina just got me that number. I apologize, deputy.
Oh, Councilor Crick?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation and for the work you're doing for it. I'll, I'll make, make the motion for option number one, that we accept it, to get, have it brought back as, for consideration at the next council meeting. It says for future meeting of council, but if we can bring it back to the next one, it'd be good.
Deputy Reeve, if, if Councilor Cook would like this brought back to the next meeting, if we, if he's okay with us adding that date in, just because that will be more clear for administration.
Yeah. All right, Councilor Crick makes the motion that council accepts presentation by the Lakeland Extreme Bronx and Bulls regarding the Lakeland Extreme event in Cold Lake as information, and furthermore directs administration to bring their request for funding support for the twenty twenty-five Lakeland Extreme Bronx and Bulls event back to April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, rather meeting of council for consideration. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All right, that's carried, thank you.
Thank you. And then once again, thank you to council, and thank you to administration for the time.
All right, on to correspondence and information.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve and council. If I bring your attention to item number ten, correspondence and information. We have twelve items. I'd like to bring to your attention three of the twelve, in no particular order. Ten point five, a letter from municipal affairs regarding tabulators and use of them. Ten point nine, a thank you card from Friends of Lakeland. Ten point ten, a thank you card from the friendly. Ten point ten, a thank you card from the friendly, age-friendly Cold Lake. That is for me.
All right, um, yeah, we need one of you guys back here. All right, yeah, we almost lost her there, so. Okay, so, um, can I get a motion? All right, mister Fedeav? Accept this information? Well, you were gone, no? Real bad. All right, let me read this off and then you can ask a question. Can I read the motion first or no? All right, uh, councillor Fedeav makes the motion that council accepts the following correspondence as information, items one through twelve. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you deputy Reeve. Um, Robyn, please step forward in your request.
Good morning council. At the last council meeting, we discussed our Stepping Stones Gala. We currently have four tickets that were available through our sponsorship that was, um, that they gave us. However, if any other members of council would like to attend, they are a hundred dollars a ticket. So I'm just wondering if we need to purchase any other tickets.
Did you get the response you were looking for from last meeting?
No, we did not have any, uh, resolution to purchase any others.
No, but, uh, I think you were asking if, for people to say if they were going or not?
I did not receive any.
Oh, I, I replied yes.
Oh, yes, to the, to, we sent out for the actual, um, ribbon cutting ceremony and the walkthrough. However, the gala was a different part. So we had, um, I had asked at the last council meeting that we had four tickets that we were given through Stepping Stones. And if we required to purchase any others, they would be at a hundred dollars a ticket. So I'm just looking for a council resolution to see if anyone else would like to purchase tickets or if the four will be sufficient.
Well, when, when is, uh, the deadline to buy the tickets?
April fifteenth. Uh, the date of the event is on September sixth.
Yeah, because I don't, I mean, I don't know about these two here, but.
Um, we could, I could make a motion that you just, uh, to allow council to participate, to attend, and then you can send out an invitation and anybody can re- reply who wants to go.
Okay.
He's.
Yeah, but you won't get everyone to reply up in time, that's the problem.
If you don't reply, you don't go.
Hey?
That's all, that's all, you get a lot of invitations to go.
Don't reply, don't go. Okay, just hold on.
Uh, yeah, sorry, uh, through, uh, deputy Reeve, to all of council, uh, you do have a motion on the floor. You can absolutely make a motion after you've addressed the one on the floor.
All right councillor Fedeav?
Yeah, I think they're just looking for like, well, there's a deadline. They're looking for numbers, right? So, uh, you know, there's four of us going to go. Are, is there going to be six of us or eight of us? I think we just make that, make that choice right now and say, make it for six, add two more, then we're safe.
All right.
No, right?
Yeah.
Are you going to go to the dinner?
I replied I was going.
No, that's for something different though, Mike. That's the ribbon cutting. So can we just make a motion after to buy four more tickets, then we've got enough?
Absolutely.
Okay. Councillor Slipchak? Yeah, do you have other discussion? Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, oh my god, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up about, uh, ten point two Clayton Bellamy, just to bring everybody's attention at April thirtieth, at four P M's, the open house. Be a good event to attend. I'll, I'll be away, but.
Can, uh, the C L, can you get a invite sent out for that, please?
Yeah. And then, uh, ten point three, I just want to make, uh, uh, health professionals proclamation from May twenty-sixth to thirtieth that we remember that for our health profession, professionals. And, uh, National Nurses Week is May twelfth to eighteenth. And then there's the ten point twelve, Leica twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship. If we could put that in our rural review and kind of give it, bring more attention to it, if it would be possible for students to see and maybe there's some rural residents that can apply for this. Because it's regarding agriculture, that kind of type of courses.
Okay, is there a, uh, proclamation going to be coming, I suppose, maybe at next council meeting, is that right? Or you probably don't know, but.
So we do it today?
So deputy Reeve, if you wish, for the nursing, you can make it today.
Um, so deputy Reeve to and all of council, there are two proclamations and correspondence today. You can choose to make both or one or the other. We do have them prepared. If you choose to make those motions, we would just need a motion per proclamation. So there is the Alberta Rural Health Week from May twenty-sixth to thirtieth. And then there's the National Nursing Week from May twelfth to eighteenth. They are two separate proclamations.
Yeah, I think we can after we, uh, um, pass this motion here. So we got three other motions to make after. All right, is there anything else?
Thank you.
All right, uh, go ahead and call this one to vote. All right, that's carried. I get a motion for the, uh, Stepping Stones tickets. Councillor Fedeav?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to, uh, sorry. I'll make the motion to add, uh, four more tickets, uh, for that event, for the dinner. On top of our four, so a total of eight.
Eight. All right councillor Fedeav makes a motion that council approves the purchase of four tickets to the Stepping Stone Crisis Society grand opening banquet at the cost of a hundred dollars per ticket to be funded from the twenty-twenty-five council public relations budget. Good thing we added to that thing today. All right, is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, no, so.
Nope, all right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All right, that's carried. Someone will make a motion for the proclamation. Both of them at the same time?
No.
Separate one. National Nursing Week? Nope. So councillor Slipchak makes a motion that council approves a proclamation of May twelfth to eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five as National Nurses Week in the Municipal District of Bonneville. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All right, that's carried. Do you want me to read this off before we make the next motion? All right, whereas nurses play an integral role in the delivery of high-quality care to our burdens and whereas the annual nursing week provides an opportunity to celebrate the numerous contributions that nurses make and will continue to make to the healthcare system. And whereas the Municipal District of Bonneville recognizes the Alberta Association Nurses' important mission to enhance, promote and advocate for, or advocate on behalf of nurses and the nursing profession. And whereas the Municipal District of Bonneville commends important work of nurses in the province. Now, therefore I, Darcy Skarson, deputy Reeve of the Municipal District of Bonneville do hereby proclaim the week of May twelfth to eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five as National Nursing Week in the Municipal District of Bonneville. All right, someone will make another motion. Councillor Keviak for the Alberta Rural Health Week? All right councillor Keviak, uh, makes a motion that council approves a proclamation of May twenty-sixth to thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five as Alberta Rural Health Week in the Municipal District of Bonneville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All right, that's carried. So whereas rural healthcare providers are invaluable assets in their communities, not only do their healthcare skills and expertise enhance the wellbeing of residents, but these professionals also play vital roles as family members, friends, neighbors, volunteers, teachers and mentors. Their dedication strengthens the fabric of rural life. And whereas equally important are the community volunteers, often guided by local professional attraction and retention committees who tirelessly, who work tirelessly to support healthcare services and providers. These volunteers are the heart of their communities, developing innovative and collaborative approaches to attract, retain healthcare professionals, ensuring rural residents have access to care close to home. Now, therefore I, Darcy Skarson, deputy Reeve of the Municipal District of Bonneville do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-sixth to thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five as Alberta Rural Health Week. In the Municipal District of Bonneville, I encourage all recognized to recognize and show appreciation for contributions of rural health professionals and volunteers who dedication enhances the quality of life in Alberta. All right, uh, on to reports from council. Start with, uh, councillor Crick?
Okay, uh, not too much. On the twenty-seventh, had an A, Egg Service Board meeting and then also had an F C S S board meeting at the same time. Um, that's it for me. Kind of, business as usual, both ones.
All right, councillor Keviak?
Uh, through the deputy Reeve, thank you. A S B meeting, there's going to be a provincial A S B tour in two thousand twenty-six sponsored by Wiltland County. Um, uh, there were several counties who wrote letters, uh, to the Minister of, uh, Ag and Federal regarding Bill C two ninety-three, uh, which is regarding the pandemic on, on farms. The wording in the bill is vague, uh, so they want that bill to not pass the senate. Northern Sunrise County declared a disaster for honey production with adverse weather and the high heat at, uh, the flowering stages of crops, like canola was short-lived. So instead of a hundred and thirty pounds per hive, they got thirty to forty pounds per hive. Um, Alberta Ag and Irrigation, uh, wants to schedule a visit with A S B, uh, with our A S B from June to mid-September, sometimes there. Uh, Lisa Danilokia was a presentation regarding funding on behalf of Open Farm Days, which will be in August sixteenth and seventeenth. Uh, it's a two-day event that gives an opportunity to experience farm and understanding how food is produced. The theme is water, the lifeblood of every farm. And the focus will be on farm visits. I also had an F C S S meeting, um, two thousand twenty-five is the fiftieth anniversary of F C S S. Um, everything else is going quite well. Um, and had a Bonneville Library Board meeting, business as usual, we're getting ready for the audit. Thank you.
All right councillor Fedeav?
Yeah, thanks. Um, library board meeting, just a couple of things when you went over, um, pretty well the same, there's a little bit, little bit of a reduction in, in budgeting, so they're trying to figure that out. Uh, F C S S is going to be a busy week next week. They had a volunteer recognition, uh, awards and that's going to be, I think, next week. Uh, also they're going to have a district meetings, uh, in May at the Matee Crossing. And, uh, just another thing I attend, just nothing to do with committees, but this, the slush cup with the Blizzard Blast. So they had about seventy-five racers come out and with the slush cup event, they had about, uh, about a hundred and fifty actual people want to slide down the hill in a cold bucket of water. Not a bucket, but run of water. So that was, uh, that was a lot of fun to watch. That's it.
All right, thank you councillor Slipchak.
All I got, uh, all I did was I went to, um, Asha Conference in Edmonton from, uh, Sunday to Wednesday. It was good events. Uh, Minister Jason Nixon spoke about, uh, extra funding for seniors lodging and housing. And, uh, there continued support behind the How Senior Live It. And, um, I attended a few workshops, so it was a good event, very informative.
All right, thank you councillor Keviak.
Yeah, thank you, uh, through deputy Reeve. Uh, I forgot to mention one thing in the F C S S. Uh, March, uh, is a very busy month in April. They, they provide tax clinics on Tuesdays and Thursdays till the end of March. And they're also helping the Bonney Lodge residents with their taxes as well. So thank you.
All right, um, as for myself, I didn't have a whole bunch, except, uh, there was a, um, a Winter Games meeting. And that's moving along nicely. Um, I will remind anyone who didn't hear, there is a, um, Pancake Breakfast this Sunday at the old EMS building in Bonneville for the nine-one-one telecommunication, telecommunications week. So, um, people from the V R F A are putting that on there, so. All right, uh, from there, we'll get a motion to go in a closed session. Councillor Keviak? All right, councillor Keviak makes a motion that this one goes into closed session. Call the vote. All right, we're in a closed session.